Good evening and welcome to this important town hall meeting tonight regarding the environmental impact of the activities of the Cohoes Company Norlite. This is the second town hall meeting that we've held on this topic, co-sponsored by the Sanctuary for Independent Media, Lights Out Norlite, and the Hudson Mohawk Environmental Action Network. The Norlite incinerator in Cohoes has been burning toxic waste for decades. During this town hall meeting, we'll talk about the environmental and health impacts of the operations in Cohoes, Colony, Green Island, Waterville, Troy, and the entire region. We'll also check in about an important piece of legislation sponsored by Assembly Member John McDonald and State Senator Neil Breslin that was unanimously passed in the New York State Legislature last month. We don't know yet whether Governor Cuomo will sign or veto the bill, and one of our panelists and maybe one of our distinguished guests will give us their thoughts on the fate of this bill. We'll also talk about a bill being considered by the Albany County Legislature, the Clean Air Law, Local Law B. There's a public hearing on Zoom for the proposed county law on the evening of Tuesday, July 28th. The question is, what will community members need to do to ensure that the Albany County Legislature will stand up for clean air? Our agenda tonight will feature three speakers and a question and answer period. We'll first hear from Jane Williams. Jane is the Chair of the Sierra Club and the National Clean Air Team and the Executive Director of California Communities Against Toxins. Then we'll hear from Joe Ritchie. Joseph Ritchie is a resident of the Cohoes Community Saratoga Sites. And finally, we'll hear from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Chief of Staff Sean Maher. I would like to introduce to you Jane Williams. Jane?
Thank you so much for inviting me to attend and to be one of the speakers here. I live all the way across the country from where you are, literally on the other coast. And as I sat and listened to the introduction about Sanctuary Media, it occurred to me to tell you something very important, and that is that in California, we don't burn hazardous waste. We don't have a single facility like Norlite. But I'm going to tell you a little bit about my personal history, and that is that shortly after I graduated from college and I had my child, my first child, my daughter, we found out that a cement kiln that's not too far from our house, roughly from where Troy is to where Norlite is, was actually burning hazardous waste, and that one of the kilns that was even closer to where we live, they wanted to burn hazardous waste. And we got involved and created this network of organizations all across California. And the outcome of that was that all existing hazardous waste facilities, which at the time were 12, were closed, and new proposed facilities, which were 10 at the time, were never built. So California, over say a decade-long period, ended the incineration of hazardous waste completely statewide. And I would knock on wood, but to say that it would be impossible to do in California what is being done in your region. People would literally rise up and march in the streets. So I wanted to give you that. I actually have quite a bit of personal history on this topic of hazardous waste burning in kilns. So to give you an idea about where we are, where Norlite fits into the sort of buffet of air pollution, there's roughly 200 stationary source categories that are accepted by US EPA as being major stationary sources of pollution. Many of these will be very familiar to you, coal-fired power plants, garbage burners, cement kilns, mineral wool production. I could go on, but these are sort of 200 of these source categories. Well, hazardous waste incineration is one of these source categories. And if you ask the public what they think about hazardous waste incineration, most members of the public would put it in the top 5 or 10% of being the most risky activities that these stationary sources engage in. And here's the interesting thing, is that I worked on the original rules, which my Clean Air Team, this is what we do, we work on these national rule makings, these giant rules that govern the entire sector of hazardous waste incineration, just as one example. And in that rule are these kilns, of which Norlite is one, that burn hazardous waste, and then there's the actual hazardous waste incinerators. Well, there's, believe it or not, even though they all burn hazardous waste, there's actually two sets of standards. And the standards that apply, or the emission limits that apply if you're a hazardous waste incinerator, are actually more stringent than if you are an aggregate kiln, which is what Norlite is. So Norlite sort of already has, in a sense, a leg up. It does not have to burn and meet the same emission limits as a regular hazardous waste incinerator, okay? And in a sense, it's almost like what we would call, I'm an economist by trade, and actually trained as an economist, it's a regulatory subsidy. And while we fought that during the time of the initial rulemaking, we lost, so that there's these two sets of standards, okay? So fast forward until now, those standards were promulgated about 15 years ago. All the facilities in the country, of which now there's less than 20 of these facilities now, there used to be a lot more, needed to come into compliance with these emission limits. And the shocking thing to me was to look at the compliance history of Norlite and to recognize it looked very familiar to me, because the cement kiln that we worked on here that burned hazardous waste for, I don't know, 15 years before we finally shut it down, was constantly in noncompliance with what were the existing rules then, the boiler and industrial furnace rules. So not to get too technical, but looking at the compliance history of this facility, it's been a serial noncomplier with whatever rules were in place for decades. And I understand that the state has an onsite monitor, that there's been a lot of activism on the site in the past. But let me just walk you through what is actually part of an agreement on consent that was signed by US EPA just earlier this year. Some of these violations are just shocking to me. They are violations of the Clean Air Act. The first one is significant violations of the dioxin and furan emission limits. Now, the Clean Air Act regulates about 188 air pollutants, and the dioxin/furan emission limits are, dioxins and furans are one of these 188 halves. They are by far the most toxic half. There is no one that would disagree with me by saying dioxins and furans are some of the most carcinogenic materials that have been made by humans, all right? Some people may understand dioxin as a contaminant and agent orange, and we contaminated the whole entire country of Vietnam and Laos, and during the Vietnam War, agent orange was sprayed everywhere, and now we have a whole class of veterans that are affected, and dioxins are this intergenerational toxin, meaning that if you're exposed today to it, it can still impact your brain kids. And it's just an extraordinarily toxic chemical, and one of the major sources of dioxin emissions into the air are incinerators, okay? And one of the significant violations that was found by US EPA at this facility was the frontline pollution prevention measure to keep an incinerator from emitting dioxin is to tightly control the exit temperature for stack gases. And this facility violated that control, that frontline control, for 38,000 hours. I mean, that's a lot. Remarkable. So we have no idea what kinds of dioxin emissions that resulted in, but I mean, that's just a clear and consistent violation for years of that exit gas temperature. So the other thing I want to talk about is there's also significant violations of what is the frontline control technology for acid gases and particulate emissions. And this is basically how the scrubber, there's a scrubber that's being operated that's supposed to tamp down acid gases and tamp down particulates. Now, the violations there are 1.5 million hours of violations. I mean, you must have been in violation for literally years, right? 12,903 hourly violations for the liquid and gas ratio between the minimum operating parameters of the scrubber. Now, these are not things that I am telling you, these are things that are in the agreement on consent from US EPA. This is what EPA found when it went and inspected the facility, okay? And it has issued these violations. Now, there's more violations, I could probably sit here for an hour and talk about all these, but these are all major violations of the Clean Air Act. The facility has been fined, but it's not even, I would say, it's not even a slap on the wrist, it's like a butterfly landing on your head, you know, they were fined virtually nothing for these violations. The maximum violation, they would have been assessed millions of dollars in permit violations. But the thing that is most alarming to me is that the things that come out of a hazardous waste incinerator, they don't just disappear in the air, they are persistent bioaccumulative toxins, okay? There's dioxins, there's PCBs that are created in the stacked gases, there's metals that can be emitted, and when you essentially unplug air pollution control devices, those things get into the air, and they get into the people that are living next to the facility. And it's just really shocking to me that this kind of serial noncompliance with the Clean Air Act, which I spent so much of my life trying to get these rules in place, has been allowed to occur. The next thing I want to talk about is that, one of the things I want to say is that there's a part of the permit, Section 1.2.12, where PCB waste are prohibited from being received at that facility or burned at that facility. That's an actual line item in the permit. But yet, this facility was allowed to accept A triple F, which is extremely toxic material, this firefighting foam. It's not as toxic as dioxin, but most scientists say it's more toxic than PCB. It's a persistent pollutant, it does not burn, people call them the forever chemicals because they're just virtually impossible to break down in the environment, and they're extremely persistent and extremely toxic. They are toxic when inhaled, they actually will go through your skin, firefighters are the most exposed because the toxins are, they're inhaling them and they're going through your skin. And the most remarkable thing to me here is that this whole campaign about burning firefighting foam got started in the first place because there's no evidence that you can burn these chemicals at the scales at which we're burning them. And of course, Norlite became, unbeknownst to us, one of the chief receivers of these chemicals, okay? We only found out from a Freedom of Information Act request that we did to the Department of Defense through their Defense Logistics Agency, that Norlite had been sent these chemicals because they were not on the original contracts. We were actually looking at other places that were specifically listed in these contracts, Norlite was not listed. So it's just remarkable to me that without any stack test, even methodology created to find these chemicals in the air, in the stacks, facilities across the United States were given permission, in most of many cases, in violation of their Title V operating permits under the Clean Air Act. Most of these permits precisely list what is allowed to be accepted at these facilities, and most hazardous waste incinerators have waste codes that are listed. A triple F does not have a waste code, and therefore, it was illegal to burn the A triple F in these incinerators. So to fast forward where we are now, it's a remarkable achievement that the activists there in New York were able to pass legislation unopposed and unanimously during an emergency session of the state legislature. And this bill that would prevent the future burning of A triple F in this facility in Cohoes now sits on the desk of the governor, waiting for his signature. It would seem to be a no-brainer. We, along with Sierra Club, along with other groups across the country, sued the Department of Defense, saying they have got to stop burning this stuff, it's incredibly dangerous when it comes out of the stack. The facilities are violating both the National Defense Authorization Act and the National Environmental Policy Act for burning it, and DoD for giving the contracts. So the remarkable thing also to me is that this issue of burning these materials is kind of front and center in New York, because you've got this facility in Indicott where they basically want to burn fluorinated compounds that are part of lithium ion batteries. Lithium ion batteries used to explode and catch fire, but then they started adding things like the PFAS chemicals, the same chemicals that are in A triple F, to the batteries to keep them from exploding, and now they basically want to burn those in Indicott. And then we just recently found out that there has been some A triple F going to the Covanta incinerator in Niagara Falls, and we just found that out through our lawsuit against DoD. So the state of New York is really going to have to come to grips with the fact that, are you going to allow these chemicals to be burned in your state, or are you not? Okay? And again, they're more like an element, like lead or mercury, or they're more like an element and behave more like a metal than they do an actual chemical. And then my final point that I want to make is that I am actually the mother of something besides my wonderful children, I am the mother of Calenviroscreen, which is a tool that the state of California uses to identify our environmental justice communities. And other states have mirrored that tool. And from what I understand, this community in Cohoes has been identified as this environmental justice, as an environmental justice community, which means that they are especially vulnerable. They have a number of vulnerability factors that they've met in order to become designated as this, and essentially, they deserve priority protection by the state and by the federal government from pollution. And so I say to myself, I'm using to myself, what good is it to designate Cohoes as an environmental justice area requiring these special protections, yet continue to allow serious noncompliance with environmental laws to occur for years, for almost for decades? So I'm sure people will have a lot of questions about my talk here and what I'm discussing, but I see noncompliance before at refineries, coal-fired power plants. You know, this is some very serious noncompliance that's happened at this facility, and there is no way anyone can argue that this is not damaging the environment and public health. And I just applaud Sanctuary Media for putting this together, I think it's such a valuable thing. I wish my own community had a Sanctuary Media, maybe we can start a one here. And I'd like to turn it back over to Corinne.
Thank you so much, Jane. That was really very interesting, and I already see a number of great questions that we'll be posing to you after we hear from the next two speakers. So take a breath and get ready for those questions.
Hey.
All right, Joe Ritchie. Joe, thank you so much for joining us again this evening. Joe is a Cohoes resident. He is directly impacted by Norlite's activities. Joe is a student at Syracuse University, he's a resident of Saratoga Sites, and a lifelong community advocate and following the issues surrounding Norlite for several years. Joe, can you talk about the activities at Norlite and how they've affected your life? And can you also address what you know about the legislation that unanimously passed and is sitting on Governor Cuomo's desk?
Yeah, so I just want to say thanks for having me again. You know, it's really a pleasure to always talk about these issues. So just pretty much, living by an incinerator is pretty much what it sounds like. It's horrible, especially with the past two years when they've been burning A triple F. We've had noticeable increases in pollution, we've had noticeable increases in just soot that gets on the windowsills, the smells, and everything that is just really unpleasant for people to just sit here and to try to raise their families, it's just very unjust, it's not right. Regardless of the A triple F, they're still burning, you know, 400-plus other chemicals that really have no place to be burned in such close proximity to residents who are trying to, again, raise their children or try to move up in life on the economic scale. So it's not fair that they're there, and we're here trying to really push the idea that Norlite is a facility that must be pretty much destroyed in a practical sense, because they're destroying our bodies with these forever chemicals. You know, I like to say that we're all going to be forever victims here at Saratoga Sites because of the half-lives that these chemicals have. And some of the legislation that we've been really trying to push the governor to sign was the McDowell-Breslin bill that was passed unanimously in both houses, which doesn't happen a lot nowadays. It's very important that this happened very unanimously and very fast in consideration with the coronavirus. We were a little worried that it might be delayed, but it was swiftly passed, which was great. But we really want Governor Cuomo to sign onto this bill because it would protect the residents of Saratoga Sites and New Yorkers. It would set a precedent that the governor really, really does not want these chemicals to be burned, the A triple F. This bill would prohibit the burning of A triple F at Norlite, but it would also set precedents for future environmental justice issues. You know, now we're talking about Niagara Falls. All right, well, let's bring the same model of this bill over now to Niagara Falls. So it's very important that the governor signs this, but it's also important that we have support from every single level of government, from the city of Cohoes, to, which they did, they passed a moratorium, to the state, which they passed a bill, and now we're waiting on the governor. But we also need to have this bill passed on county level, and it's extremely important that this is done in a manner where there's no pushback from local legislatures in our area, because we really need the whole of the county legislator to support this bill, to support Local Law B, which there'll be a public hearing, I guess, this Tuesday. You can sign up on the Albany County Legislative website, and it'll give you all the additional information there. But really, if you live in Albany County, and even if you don't, pressure your local legislator to vote yes for the passing of Local Law B, because we need support from every single level of government. It doesn't matter if the state's already trying to do it, the state may not. So we need that assurance from the county government saying that we will pass this bill, we support everybody that lives in Saratoga Sites, we support people who live down in Queamons, because this is also another issue with the Lafarge plant, I believe, with tire burning. So everything has just been, our county is a very environmental disaster, as I put it, there's so many things that are going on in our county that really need to be fixed. And pressuring your local officials, pressuring your media outlets to really get the coverage on your issues like Norlite, is it so important to becoming a grassroots activist and to really speaking out what you want to be done? Because we live in the United States of America, we have the ability to get out on the streets and say, this is what we want done in our community. We have the right to pressure our local officials, we don't have to worry about getting killed by the government, we don't have to worry about getting arrested for what we say. It's our right, and we need to take that right and use the advantage of our American dream that our forefathers gave for us. We must speak the truth, and we must hold people accountable, because if we don't hold people accountable, it's going to be another 50 years to where the government will not support us. And it's going to be another 50 years where we might have a very ambitious state goal to become 100% renewable by 2050, but if Norlite is still here, the goal, in my eyes, is worthless. Even though Norlite is not a renewable energy facility, and it's not an energy facility, needs to be shut down, it's polluting our areas, it should be transformed into something else, like a renewable energy facility, like a solar field, something, you know, the technology is building every single day of the week, and there's more incentives to be done, higher paying jobs, people who actually live here. And we need to stop all these issues from happening, because people like to ask, you know, well, why haven't you moved out of there before? The gentrification in the area is another big issue, and that's another town hall we could have. But we really need to focus on passing Local Law B in the county level, and we also need to focus on pressuring the governor to sign this bill.
Joe, thank you so much for sharing. So I want to remind people, if you've got questions for Joe, if you've got questions for Jane, or just questions that you want to pose in general, type them into the chat box, and we'll get to them after we hear from our last speaker this evening, and that'll be Sean Maher from the State Department of Environmental Conservation. Sean is the Chief of Staff there, he's a graduate of Siena College, and at DEC, he works to help lead implementation of agency priorities. Prior to becoming the Chief of Staff in 2018, Sean was the Assistant Commissioner of Public Affairs for DEC, helping to guide all media and communications efforts of the agency. He was the Director of Government Relations also for Audubon, New York, where he led efforts to advance state and federal conservation policies and build support for wildlife conservation initiatives in the state, including climate change adaptation strategies. In 2012, he received the Outstanding Conservationist Award from the Wildlife Society in recognition of his efforts. Sean has also taught courses on environmental policy and management as an adjunct professor at Siena College. He currently lives in Niskiuna with his wife Jessica and daughter Stephanie. Sean, what can you tell us?
Hey Corinne, thanks for having me on tonight, and welcome everyone, glad you could make it out to this important dialogue. And I really want to thank the Sanctuary for Independent Media for hosting this second edition of this important conversation in the community. Obviously, with COVID, we've been a little setback in some of the community conversations that we've wanted to foster in Cohoes in the springtime here, and I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to, I think, bring everyone up to speed on all the actions the DEC is bringing to bear on this facility and in this community, because I want everyone to know in the area and the region that we're hearing you loud and clear. And Commissioner Segos has been very clear in our path forward, irrespective of legislation and irrespective of firefighting foam, I think we're taking a very comprehensive look at the overall operation of this facility. And our most recent announcement that you probably saw about a month ago now was a letter to the company alerting them that they have two permit renewals that are coming due, and we intend to treat those as new permits moving forward, because what we want to do is really take a fresh look at the entirety of the operations of this facility. I think when you look over the last 70 years that they've been in operation now, you know, they've changed from being an aggregate facility to a facility that does two things. One is obviously produce aggregate, and the other is a hazardous waste incinerator. And we think that these permits and the community is deserving of a fresh look at their operations overall. So we announced the other week was that we intend to treat their applications as new applications, which triggers a very comprehensive community engagement process moving forward. And while we're very much in the early phases of this, our intention is to continue to keep the dialogue going with the community, and that's why I wanted to obviously join you all tonight, to bring you up to speed on some of these efforts, but obviously be able to answer your questions, because we know there are a lot out there in the community, and we are a resource for you, and we're in your corner, because we are your government, and our duty and job and obligation is to ensure that your environment is protected. And whenever there are concerns like this, we obviously jump into action. So just a few level-setting facts, just to bring you up to speed on where we are. So in 2019, when the facility alerted us that they had begun processing A triple F foam at their facility, we quickly jumped into gear to figure out what our legal and regulatory oversight abilities were. And as we started our investigation and diving in, one of our first actions was to communicate to the facility and to have them stop incinerating that firefighting foam. And it was through our direction that the facility agreed to do that. The letter I referenced back in June further reiterated that commitment and puts the facility on notice that they are directed to not, and they have agreed to not do that. And we also have taken the opportunity to, again, leverage our authorities over this facility and make sure that we have the utmost oversight going on. And one of the other things we did in that letter, in addition to putting them on notice that their permit renewals are going to be treated as new applications, we also told them that if they plan to process any substances that contain emerging contaminants or emerging contaminants- uh or anything that's not currently regulated, they have to come to us for a permit modification. This is our way of really putting them on notice that we are not happy and pleased with what's been going on. And we intend to ensure that we have the utmost stridency that we're bringing to bear on this facility. And like I said, the commissioner has been very focused on this topic. And uh he finally was able to take a tour last week, meeting Joe and some of the residents of the Saratoga sites. So he could see firsthand exactly what they're dealing with. And I think that really helped uh reiterate his resolve to advancing actions on the ground. And that is really our goal here, we want to work hand in hand with the community. Uh this uh facility is at a storied legacy, unfortunately, and obviously a lot of actions that DEC has taken in the past. Um and and we, again, think it's time for a very fresh look at what they're doing overall. So on A triple F, um our investigations into a lot of this is still ongoing. And and what we're prioritizing overall is a focus on, obviously, using the best available science to make sure this community is protected and not at risk. And one of the things I wanted to uh let community folks know tonight is that um in addition to our actions on the permit and some of the other investigation work we have going on. Um we are going to be conducting some additional sampling on the ground, uh looking at soil and water samples uh to really study, uh you know, absent actually studying and analyzing what comes out of the stacks at Norlite when they're burning uh A triple F foam or perfluorinated compounds. What we're going to do as this pause and as they're not processing any of this, start looking comprehensively on the ground uh to see if there is any indication that there was a release to the environment. Um what our experts uh at DEC really uh have designed is a true comprehensive study to look around the Norlite facility, looking both upstream, downstream, upwind, downwind, uh further in the community and doing a strong comparative analysis. Because we've heard the community loud and clear that um they want to know what has happened and and are they at risk? And we too want to answer those questions. So uh tomorrow we'll be formally announcing the sampling initiative that will be occurring over the coming weeks. Um and I wanted the community to know first and hear it first from us tonight that this is going to be happening. Because it is part of our ongoing commitment here to the Cohoes community and the capital region at large to really take a strong look at exactly what's going on at the facility. And the way that our experts have designed this study is to really take that comprehensive look. Um both from the perfluorinated compounds and A triple F substances, but also some of the more historic things that may have been coming out of the stack based on what they were processing. Again, we're not looking just at firefighting foam or perfluorinated compounds here. We really want to take a holistic look uh at this community and what, if any, contributions from this facility to environmental releases have been. And that is our commitment to the community. So again, wanted to um obviously take the opportunity to let you know of that action tonight. Um just so you knew it was uh coming out and you wouldn't be surprised by it tomorrow. And we hope it will shed a good light on exactly what has gone on in the past and what the relative risks are. And we fully want to keep the community informed as that goes on. And again, as part of the future permit proceedings, but in general, we want to keep this dialogue with the community going. And one of the ways we want to do that is obviously making our experts available to the community. Uh you know, we're looking at the times, obviously, with COVID, we we have to be mindful of social distancing and mask protocols and and you know, not putting our staff and community members at risk. But we really recognize the need, and we've been working with the mayor to develop some potential uh strategies moving forward to keep this community conversation going. Again, I really thank the Sanctuary for Independent Media tonight for keeping this dialogue going on this format. And happy to join, and our staff can be available for future conversations here. Uh because we're here for the community overall, and the commissioner has made it very clear that this is one of his top priorities overall. Um and and we really need to make sure that we're taking comprehensive actions. And that's exactly what we're doing and what we've been doing. I think our investigation work that's been underway uh is ongoing. But we are really bringing to bear some of the foremost experts in the country that work for DEC and the Department of Health to really comprehensively, again, look at this facility, look at its environmental footprint, and take continued comprehensive actions if we need to moving forward on the community's behalf. Um so I wanted to give that overview of some of what we've got going on. Uh and it is, um you know, just a high level overview, because there is a lot of work that we have underway um that we're working directly with our staff and our experts day in and day out on this issue overall. Um again, when I say we have some of the foremost experts in the country, when it comes to analyzing air emissions and air toxic emissions, our um crew that we have is really well respected throughout the entirety of this country. And always, when they come to a facility like this or an issue like this, always have the community's best interest in mind and really want to have science be the guide of what's going on. And they've been pioneering some of this work, uh you know, I say pioneering, but it's unfortunate that we have to pioneer this work. Um when we're talking about emerging contaminants that have been released in the environment. But um we're gaining a lot of experience and obviously how we need to address these contaminants when they're found in the environment. Um you know, look at the Housick Falls work that we have going on, the work in Newburgh and Long Island and and other areas of the state where we've unfortunately found these releases into the environment that we have to address. And moving forward, uh you know, our goal is to really bring that science and expertise that we're gaining in this response to areas like Cohoes and really designing appropriate studies uh and analyses that will give us good data that, again, drives our future actions. So the sampling effort that we're going to be doing is sort of step one in that process. It's going to give us a good snapshot of what's going on around this facility. Compare it to some background uh samples that we're going to take in other parts of the capital district. And then that will, again, drive where we move in the future. Ideally, we won't have to move anywhere, because hopefully we're not going to find anything. But should we do, we're poised and ready to obviously get to work on the ground and do what we have to do to ensure the community is protected. And again, our goal is to do that hand in hand uh with everyone in the Cohoes community beyond. And we're going to look forward to continuing this conversation and happy to take your questions here tonight to hopefully give you that information.
Great, well, thank you so much for sharing, for making news tonight and sharing all of that with us. Um there are a lot of questions, a lot of questions for you, a lot of questions for Jane. I want to remind people that if you have questions, you can type them in the chat bar. I actually don't know, we've got a lot of people on the phone who are not on either the Facebook Live or on the Zoom. Um I'm actually wondering whether we've got some distinguished guests. Last time we were joined by Assemblymember John McDonald. I'm not sure if we have Senator Neil Breslin on the phone, but if there's any way for the senator to identify himself so that we can unmute his line. We'd love to ask him about what he knows about whether the governor is likely to sign the bill. Um Sean, there's no light that you can shed on that question. Is there the bill that was passed by the legislature unanimously? It's it's uh, I don't know that it's on the governor's desk yet, it may not have been sent. But what's, do you have any indication about whether he's inclined to sign it or not? Oh, Sean's muted, someone needs to unmute Sean.
Thanks, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um I cannot speak to uh the governor's uh decision on this legislation. Um the he does have a comprehensive review process that the administration takes to all legislation that's passed. Uh you know, my goal here tonight is really irrespective of that bill overall. I wanted everyone to know exactly what we're doing and bringing to bear on this facility and this issue overall. Uh because, you know, regardless of what happens with that bill, um these are the concrete actions that we are undertaking currently and are going to be moving on in the future. And of course, this isn't going to stop here. And you know, as we do in any community that we have to get involved in, we don't leave until the job is done. And even if legislation is passed to address things, that we still have an obligation to the community through our regulatory programs and ongoing response actions to continue to take actions. And that's why I wanted to outline some of those tonight.
Thanks. Um so I I think our, the folks who are providing tech support on this call, if if there's any indication that the senator is on the line, you know, let us know, we'd love to hear from him. In the meantime, Jane, I want to go back to um your your remarks earlier. And just clarify, um you said that, or did you say that there were only 20 facilities that burn this kind of hazardous waste in the whole country? Is that true? Oh, Jane needs to be unmuted as well. Maybe Jane, there you go, Jane.
Sorry, yes, there's roughly 20 facilities in the country that burn hazardous waste now.
Wow.
And none in California.
And none in California, but.
Yeah, and those, those are commercial facilities that accept waste from offsite like Norlite does. Um there's some facilities that burn hazardous waste that are part of a chemical manufacturing facility. But there's only, there's less than 20 of these commercial hazardous waste facilities in the country now.
Wow, an honor. So.
No, can I, can I, can I just take this opportunity to say that, okay, the waste that came from DOD to Norlite was manifested like it was hazardous waste. And the state was notified at the very first shipment, which occurred in 2017. Because the manifesting system, it manifests it to the state, it's not a federal system. So it is remarkable to me that the state of New York would say that they just found out this was happening when they have an onsite monitor. It's the only hazardous waste incineration facility in the entire country that has an onsite monitor. There's no onsite monitor at any other of these facilities nationwide. And DOD specifically said in its contracts that the A triple F must be manifested. And there's a reason for that, that's because they want to wipe out the liability chain under the Comprehensive Environmental Response and Liability Act. Because once waste goes to an incinerator, it essentially erases the title to the waste. And that's how you do it, is with the manifest. So this has been for over two.
Respond to that too, I mean, obviously, our investigation into this is still very much ongoing. Um the records that I've seen has been an email in 2019 where the facility alerted us to that. Obviously, we've requested a lot of information from them, and we have detailed records going back to 2018 now, which is what we've shared with the mayor of Cohoes and others about what our investigation has found so far. But we're continuing to take a deep look at that. And you know, there are, in the regular complex regulatory world of chemicals, um you know, New York was the first state to regulate perfluorinated compounds like PFOA and PFOS as hazardous substances. So that gave us uh the power to use our Superfund program to go into communities like Housick Falls and hold polluters accountable and achieve environmental cleanups on the ground, which we're moving forward in in Housick Falls. Um but it's not currently regulated as a hazardous waste, and obviously on the federal level, it's unregulated overall. Um you know, our monitor that we have onsite is there full time. We're taking a good look at making sure that the facility wasn't hiding something from that monitor or that monitor didn't miss something in any paperwork or reporting. Uh but typically what he looks for is the various permit requirements that we have against this facility. We look at uh the hazardous wastes which are regulated by us, which, as Jane pointed out, are manifested. And we keep very close tabs on the records that they keep. When it comes to hazardous substances like this, there aren't uh the same level of stridency when it comes to reporting requirements. And that's also something that we're taking that overall across the state is how do we continue to improve our regulation of these chemicals overall? We obviously took that step in 2016 to regulate them as hazardous substances and give us the the tools and the power to oversee these cleanups. And now we're continuing to explore how we effectively ratchet down and continue to protect New Yorkers, because that is our ultimate goal.
Thank you for that. Um so many questions are coming in here. Another one that I wanted to ask direct to Jane. Jane, what, what was happening with these, um with some of these materials before they started shipping them to Norlite? Where were these chemicals being uh being disposed of or destroyed in the in the past?
I'm so glad you asked, because the Department of Defense is known, actually, since the late 50s that these chemicals were extraordinarily toxic and that they bio-concentrated in breast milk. Um so this is not news to the Department of Defense, actually. Um it might be news to the regulators, but it was not news to DOD. And DOD early on recognized that that these compounds that were used, A triple F, were going at some point in time to become a problem. Well, when the US EPA made a deal with the manufacturers, okay, back in um the mid 2000s, all right, let's just say. They started storing them, and they've stored them for the last 15 years.
Storing them, just.
They, they stored them, okay, and they're not difficult to store. They basically come in a powdered form. In fact, I think maybe what I need to do is send a picture of what A triple F looks like. Um so that everyone understands what it looks like. So in case you see it either going down the road or coming to a facility that you regulate, you can see it. Because it kind of comes in a canister that looks like like fluorine for your pool, and it comes in a powdered form. It's not liquid, it comes in powder. And it says right on there, A triple F, it's not hard to figure out what it is, it's A triple F. And they stored it, and not only did they store it, the DOD actually tried to figure out what to do with it. They actually looked at different treatment technologies, all right? Um and they couldn't come up, come up with anything. And I'm so glad you asked me this question, because DOD faced this exact same problem um back at the end of the Cold War. They had mixed waste, meaning they had hazardous waste that was mixed with radiation. And they had this stuff stored all over the place, and they did not know what to do with it. And when the Bush administration came in, they figured out what to do with it. They sent it to cement kilns across the United States and burned it. And that's exactly what DOD did here. They took this A triple F, they found their opportunity, they basically let contracts out and started burning it. They did manifest it, so the states that were receiving it should have known that it was coming to them, okay? But the Department of Defense has known for decades that this was highly toxic material, that it bio-concentrated, and that it was dangerous at very low levels. And they basically took the political opportunity provided by the Trump administration. When I called regions and said, you know that your facilities are burning A triple F? Often I heard gas on the other end of the phone. That material does not burn, what are you talking about if you're burning it here? I'm like, you're burning it in your region. Um and DOD has taken the opportunity, as this is a political opportunity for DOD, to get rid of this material. Knowing it does not burn, and you cannot burn it hotter, by the way. It does not burn, it's designed not to burn. It was specifically created to put fires out in submarines when we switched from TNT to RDX. So it was a chemical that was literally created by the DOD during the Cold War, during the second, the Second World War, to not burn. So trying to burn it hotter or longer or in a different type of facility, it's designed not to burn. That's why it's a beautiful chemical to be used like in lithium ion batteries or to put out fires.
Thanks, Jane. You know, one of the things that um has moved me about this entire discussion is the passion with which Joe Ritchie speaks. Um and I'm seeing it in some of these questions that are coming across. And and Sean, I, you know, I, I, we should send you some of these if you can't see all of them, because I think the state needs to hear some of this stuff. I mean, you're hearing from a former volunteer firefighter who says that her company sprayed high R foam, not sure exactly what that is, in a drill into a wetland, and she tried to stop it. And she's asking, what should our town be doing to test? And I I don't know if what she's asking is what a couple of other people are asking, which is, should residents of Cohoes have blood testing for certain PFAS chemicals? I mean, the questions from people in the community are not only what are we doing to stop this, but they're also what should I be doing myself uh to look out for my own health? Does any, do either of you have any, any words of advice for the community about what they can be doing right now?
Well, first of all, um you know, you've got to stop burning A triple F and perfluorinated compounds in your state. Your state, I I don't know why, but I mean, a huge amount of DOD stockpile was burned at the Norlite facility. It's shocking to me, but it did happen. And now you've got, um you know, this Sungeel facility where where there's massive amounts of perfluorinated compounds that were added to lithium ion batteries so they wouldn't explode. Now they want to burn those too there. And then you've got A triple F, which we just found out through another Freedom of Information Act, going to the Covanta incinerator. So like the state of New York needs to grapple with, are you really going to re-intrain these perfluorinated compounds throughout your entire state? It's great that you like regulated them as a hazardous substance, you should have regulated them as a hazardous waste. And it's great that, you know, all of a sudden you care about them in water. But let me tell you, these chemicals go up in the air and they come down and they go into the water. So you're not getting rid of them, you're just paying money to train them everywhere. Ironically, we held a uh a big conference here in California about these chemicals, okay? Scientists from all over the country came, it was a three day conference. And at the end of that conference, there were two major takeaways. Number one, we've got to stop making these chemicals, the earth is filled already with them. And number two, we have to stop burning them. They are literally in the rain because we are in training them in the atmosphere. The far reaches of the earth have now been contaminated with these chemicals, because we are putting them up in the air. And they now preferentially deposit into the Great Lakes. And they now preferentially deposit into the Great Lakes, into the Arctic. They're everywhere. So we, we've got to stop doing that. That's the first thing. The second thing is, if you're a firefighter, I strongly recommend you call Rob Blot. Because he is now representing firefighters as a class across the United States and suing the manufacturers of the chemicals. And when we looked at firefighter blood here in our Fox study, firefighter occupational exposure study, we found a certain type of perforated compound persisting in the blood of firefighters even a decade after they retired. So you're not going to tell me that there's a firefighter that has ever used foam or been exposed to this foam that still doesn't have it in their body. And so I, I urge those people to contact him. He's doing a class action suit. And, and don't use the foam. And we've got to stop using the foam. Even the American Petroleum Institute says, don't use the foam on tank farms. And I thought I responded to tank farm fires all over the country where they're putting the foam on there, not to fight the fire, but to keep the vapors down so they don't have to issue evacuation orders. So we've got to switch to different types of firefighting techniques and stop using the foam. That's, those, those are the top three things I can tell you to do as a state right now.
Sean, what would you say to some of these residents who are asking, they're specifically asking you, should I go get a blood test? Should I try to find out if some of these chemicals are in my body? What do you say?
Sure. Well, first off, we, I'm not a health professional, but we work with our colleagues at the Department of Health. And, you know, part of what we want to do with the future community conversations is make sure that we have good representation from New York State DOH to address a lot of these questions. And Corinne, I think to your point, obviously, if you want to compile all the questions tonight, we'd be happy to go through and provide some responses or use it as a way of driving future community sessions so that people can come in and get these questions answered directly. But when it comes to biomonitoring, obviously, DOH takes the lead on that. But what we're doing with them now, and we've heard the, you know, requests loud and clear from the mayor and others to do that. What we want to do again is let science be the, the driving force here. And the on-the-ground sampling that we're going to do is going to give us a very holistic snapshot of what's happening in this community. And again, what we find through that analysis is really going to, again, inform what moves forward in the community in the future, vis a vis more sampling or more actions on the ground. And then also biomonitoring, because what you want to do is really have a good snapshot of what you're looking for in blood samples. Because again, I think as Jane pointed out, these are very ubiquitous, widely-used chemicals that were, you know, used in a number of different products every day, from Scotch Guards to firefighting foams to carpets, to Teflon pans, you name it, they were widely used. And what we, you know, unfortunately have now is, you know, as Jane pointed out, we're finding it in, you know, biomonitoring samples that we take in many different communities across the country. It's just the, and whenever we take samples around, you know, any environmental, you know, place that we have to look at, we're finding trace deceptions of these compounds just because they were so widely used. And what you really need to look for on this point is exactly what, you know, what are elevated levels, what are background levels now? And that really drives and guides what you do. So we wanted to get and move forward with this on-the-ground sampling to really inform that conversation. And DOH worked with us on that study design so that we make sure we're testing for the right parameters that could inform a future biomonitoring initiative. So we haven't ruled anything out, but it's a real stepwise approach that we did in the state from a responsible regulatory standpoint to make sure that we're letting science and what we're seeing on the ground drive our future actions moving forward. And that's our goal.
So we've got a whole series of questions about DEC's regulatory authority and what, what they can do. So I hope you're ready.
Corinne, I forgot to, I forgot to say one thing too about our sampling. You know, as soon as we started working with Keeler and Cohoes and others around the area, before we moved to do any on-the-ground sampling, the first thing we had to do is look at the primary exposure pathway, which, as Jane pointed out, these are very water-loving chemicals, have you? And they have an affinity for water. So really, from an environmental exposure standpoint, one of the primary exposure pathways is ingestion through drinking water. So the first analysis that we did was looking at the drinking water supplies of Cohoes and nearby Green Island because we wanted to see if there was any changes over time from the previous sampling that had been conducted around 2017 of those water supplies. Thankfully, we didn't see any changes in that water supply. So we knew that there wasn't an impact from Norlite on drinking water, which gave us, I think, a little more confidence in really taking our time to design a careful study from a responsible regulatory standpoint to make sure that we were going by the books to analyze for the things that we had to analyze and again, drive our future actions on the ground. So again, we wanted to make sure that drinking water was not impacted. And thankfully, we didn't find that, which allowed us, you know, more time to focus on this new study that I just spoke about tonight.
So Jane mentioned that there have been millions of hours of emissions violation, violations from Norlite. And I guess the question, and, and it's been, it's been repeated by a number of people here is, why was enforcement so lax? If there was a, a full-time DEC monitor onsite, if, if the state had the manifest, I'm just picking pieces of these questions here. What was DEC doing during these times when, when there should have been knowledge that, that these, that these violations were ongoing? What was happening?
Yeah, we've got a very long track record of violations against this facility. And obviously, the fact that they have a monitor is a result from various consent orders in the past. We've fined and penalized this company numerous times in the past. You know, we've had environmental benefit projects that they've financed in the community as part of their previous mistakes. But again, you know, we're taking a fresh look at this. And the commissioner, you know, relatively speaking, being new to the agency and new to the history of DEC's oversight over this facility. It's evolved and changed over time. And now what we're seeing is a true revolution into a more stringent oversight posture with this because he's not happy with the way things have gone. And again, how this facility has transitioned over time from being an aggregate producer to doing two jobs. And that's why we wanted to take that fresh look at the permits and treat them as new applications and give the community a strong opportunity to really get engaged moving forward. Because we need to do this hand in hand, and that's our goal. And it is a new day as it pertains to DEC's moving forward with this facility. If you go on our website to our info locator webpage, you can find out a lot of the information on there with regard to the permits and the various permits that we have that oversee this facility. There are, there is some information on our various notices of violation and past consent orders. And we're going to continue to keep that information updated. And, you know, again, our doors are always open here. So these questions, you know, our experts are always available to answer them. And again, our goal here is to keep the conversation going with the community and make sure they have a total picture of exactly what we do on a regular basis and where we're going in the future to make sure that this facility is complying. And also, again, giving the community an opportunity and their say in the process.
So instead of looking backwards, because that's always difficult, especially as you're saying, there's, you know, there's new, new people involved and a renewed interest and a renewed commitment to making things better, let's look forward. And some of the questions that, that are being asked here are, you know, what, what are the options for holding Norlite accountable for violations? And let me just break that down a little bit because, as many people know, with some of these big companies, it's the cost of doing business to get a fine. And so what could the DEC do? Could they deny permit renewals? Could they, could, could the state sue Norlite? What are some, some proactive responsive steps that you can take that aren't just sort of going to amount to a small fine that, as I said, is the cost of doing business?
So yeah, I mean, we continue to use all available legal and regulatory tools on every facility that we oversee in the state and especially Norlite. And what we do is obviously look at the statute and what's applicable and always flex the strongest muscles that we can and get the most out of any facility that has a violation that happens. And obviously, we always reserve our rights to take further actions if additional violations are found. But when it comes to revoking a permit or something like that, there is a complex process. And you have to very carefully proceed through that because a facility does have opportunities through the laws and regulations that, you know, procedurally, they can do things to make it difficult for you. So that's why, again, our goal here by treating their applications for renewal as new permits, that resets the clock and starts it over fresh. And that shows them and signals to them that we mean business when it comes to taking a real hard look at exactly what their operations are now and where it's going in the future. And if we're not satisfied during that review process of those permits, we're obviously going to take appropriate action with the community to address that moving forward. And, you know, as that process plays out, again, the letter that we sent to the company in June really articulated to them that, one, they're not burning firefighting foam, and we're seeing to that. And two, if they want to burn anything that is currently unregulated or just not a hazardous waste, that they have to come to us first and with a permit modification, that again, we have to review with the community and determine whether or not they would be allowed to process that in their facility. So it really shows to the facility and it should show to the community that we really do mean business when it comes to flexing our muscles here and using the utmost powers that the state of New York has. And that is being brought on this facility. And again, that is our goal to the community. And, you know, why we're going to continue this dialogue moving forward so that they know exactly the actions that we're taking, why we're taking them, and how we're going to work with them moving forward.
Folks on this call might want to get involved in your, in your process. How, what, what would you say to people who want to be involved in that community conversation with DEC?
Sure. Well, first, stay tuned. It's early in the process right now. And what we have to do is first initially is, you know, we have received the applications from the facilities for the two permits that are up for renewal now. And they're under a very careful review by DEC to determine whether or not they're complete and enough to start that community-driven process or not. You know, from there, there are various procedural guidelines and timelines that we have to follow. And what we want to do is one of the next steps is we're in the process of producing a, a community update newsletter that we want to send out far and wide in the Coes community and beyond, that will really talk about much of what I spoke about tonight and talk about that process moving forward as well. So the community can know what to expect and also where to go for some of the information from the experts that we have. You know, I again encourage you to sign up for our various email listservs on DEC Delivers. There's a specific Albany County list that you can sign up for that will, you know, that we use to really send out information on the host of environmental initiatives that we have from, you know, environmental remediation of contaminants to our fish and wildlife conservation efforts and beyond. So signing up with us is a good way to stay informed. And, you know, again, working with Mayor Keeler and the Coes community and others, we want to have more community dialogues moving forward because we recognize that there's a lot of need for information and questions that folks have. And obviously, we have some answers. And other answers, we're working hard at getting the information that we need to be able to answer it. And that is, again, our commitment to the community to make sure that we're using the best available science we have, generating that science when we don't have it, but keeping them apprised every step of the process.
I know that we've got Assemblymember John McDonald on the phone, and I'm wondering if we can unmute his line. And Assemblymember McDonald, I'd like to ask you to just briefly explain your bill and, and where it stands and what you've heard about whether the governor, you know, is going to address this anytime soon.
Sure, Corinne, thank you. And right now, you know, the bill, as many people know, prohibits the incineration of these materials, the PFAS materials, the A triple F materials in, in specifically at this one site. We originally had a statewide bill when we were back a month ago. We decided to change it to just be particular to this site. Since that time, Senator Breslin and I have had conversations with the governor's staff. Obviously, DEC and myself, Senator Breslin, have had ongoing discussions for past several months. As Sean unfortunately knows, we, we get to talk about a lot of different issues throughout the whole Assembly District. But we've had some very good constructive discussions. And, you know, I'm very pleased with what Sean is mentioning tonight, which will be announced more formally tomorrow because it's a culmination of the dialogues that's been going on with the agencies, not only DEC but DOH, but also with the city of Cohoes and with the legislature. At this time, the bill is still less in the Senate. Senator Breslin and I have talked about, you know, the process. And the process is we can either push the bill over and make the governor make a decision. Or sometimes, and this is what some of the old timers say here, it's best to let it grow some whiskers so that people are comfortable with it. They, they, they say the construct is pretty straightforward. It's a matter of when and we deliver it while we have the governor's attention. And, you know, admittedly, COVID-19, as has been mentioned, has been playing an impact. But I would expect, you know, Senator Breslin and I will be, we're in session this last three days. We're still in session right now. Next week, we will get back together and recalibrate and see what our next step should be. But right now, the governor has a call for it, and the Senate hasn't forced it over.
And how much time does the governor have once the Senate sends the bill over?
Once the bill goes over, he has 10, 10 days to consider the bill.
And do you have any advice for folks on the phone about what they can do if they want to see the governor sign that bill?
Well, you know, it's, it's a democratic process. It's continued advocacy. I know that many individuals through different means I've been seeing have been sending out their messages of support. And I think that's always an important part of the process. And I think that's what we need to, what we need to continue to do.
Okay. Thank you so much. I know that you're, you're at the Capitol now. I can see from your background. So thanks for ducking in to the call.
Thank you.
I have a question here for Joe Ritchie. And the question, Joe, I don't know if you're still, I think you're sitting there, you are. If Norlite's permits are renewed, will Saratoga sites residents remain where they are? Are you going to be able to move? There's been some discussion about that. Can you fill us in?
Yeah, there, there has been discussion about that. Obviously, that's a whole nother bureaucratic hoop to go through with HUD, which is quite frustrating. But the end goal is, I think, permit renewal or not, I, I believe the residents of Saratoga sites are going to be moved. It's now just a matter of a waiting game and when, and when we're going to move. Because it's very important to really move these folks out of here, myself, you know, all my friends who live here, my neighbors and people who I don't know. I care about everyone here a lot, you know, everyone here. I've grown up here my whole life. Cohoes is a family to me. I think that's a really good benefit we have here as a small community is that everyone knows each other and, or at least everyone has seen each other's faces. And I care about every single one of those faces out there. And if I think the permit is renewed, I think it would be an honest, say politely, I think it would, it would be very disrespectful if this permit was renewed. I think everyone knows my position on the, this whole issue. I want Norlite to be gone. I don't want them to keep doing what they're doing and keep jumping through these hoops, paying these fines and the community never seeing a dime of this money. Because Norlite is just there to benefit themselves. We've never seen anything positive come from Norlite into the community, at least since I've been born. And since I've been involved in the community, and I used to play sports, I used to do band, I used to do everything in high school. And I don't think I've ever once seen their name in a sponsored event. So it is, I will not be happy and the residents of Saratoga sites will not be happy with the state if this permit is renewed. And we will make sure that it's known that we're not happy about it. But if it is passed, it's going to be, it's going to be very bad for the state. I can tell you that right now.
Sean, question about the permit renewals. What are the standards for renewing permits? Are they, are they entirely objective? Or are there, are there ways for the community to, to make their feelings be known? Is, is that taken into consideration when the state is seeing them renewing permits? Or is it simply, you know, they've checked all the boxes, they've dotted all their, their i's and they've crossed all their t's and they're good to go?
No, again, it's, it's treating these permits as new applications that resets the process. And they're very specific, especially for environmental justice communities, steps that the facility has to take as part of the process to engage that community in here directly. And that's why we wanted to take the action and treat them as new applications because the community is deserving of a, a voice in the process. And that's what we wanted to provide and are going to continue to facilitate that. Joe, just to your point, you know, after we spoke last week and did, you know, go back to our crew and start looking at our enforcement history and the penalties. And there were some environmental benefit projects. So I'm putting together a little compilation that I'll send over to you that gives a little bit more of that historical context of what we've done in the past, just so you can have that. But obviously, moving forward, we've heard you loud and clear about making sure that these penalties don't just go into our penalty account, but are reinvested in the community. And that's something that we're going to take into consideration as we move forward, should we have to take any additional actions against this facility. And Corinne, I see a number of questions coming in about the water testing that we've done and some questions about the Tom Hannon. So I just want to, you know, for this sampling that we did, you know, most recently for Cohoes and Green Island. you know, most recently for Cohoes and Green Island, that's because we wanted to look at the two most proximate water supplies. Through our work in Who's Falls, we did sampling of the Tom Haneck in 2019. And that was the most recent sampling data that we have there, which showed that, you know, the, the finished water that goes up the Troy system is not intact for perforated compounds. So, you know, we're continuing to monitor that with the City of Troy. And we haven't seen any changes over time through that monitoring. So we don't see, at present, any influence of anything that could have been coming out at Norlite impacting the Tom Haneck. But again, the on-the-ground sampling that we're going to do is obviously going to inform a lot of additional research that we may have to do moving forward. And obviously, I appreciate hearing the comments on private wells and water supplies. You know, we focus on the large community water supplies first because they service the most amount of people. And, you know, I think the majority of the Coz community is on a private water supply. But the on-the-ground sampling that we do, looking at soil, you know, just go in a little detail and walk out for a sec. But we're going to look at both a zero to two inch look and a zero to six inch look of the soil. So that's going to give you, you know, both the sort of an immediate snapshot and that zero to two inch look. And then when you go zero to six inches, that's going to give you more of that historic look back. And that's why we're not just looking for our perforated compounds and what we're doing, but really looking at more of a broad suite of the potential contaminants that may have been coming out of that facility over time. That will give us a more holistic snapshot, again, of what the, you know, on the ground, we're looking at here. And then that will, again, drive any future sampling that may, we may need to do. So from there, we'll look at, you know, any private water supplies or people on a well that may need to be sampled. And this is a, an approach that we've built and really, unfortunately, very successful at in other parts of the state as we've had to go into communities and responsibly look for these contaminants where they may be impacting other communities or other private property owners. I can't give you too much more detail on the sampling plan now because step one in the process is after we announce this is to start getting access agreements with some of the property owners that we want to target sampling. And the sample may evolve as we have these conversations in the areas we want to sample. We may need to refine it. But throughout the process, again, we want to keep everyone informed and engaged. And obviously, as our experts get data back and begin analyzing it, we're going to have an informed conversation with the community about what we found and where we're going next. Because, you know, again, we need to do this hand in hand. And we have this strong commitment to the Coz community so that they know exactly what's going on and what we're up to.
So Jane, I want to turn back to you. I have a few questions about some other facilities in New York. But I want to give you an opportunity to, is there anything that you heard in this discussion about enforcement that, that you want to comment on?
Well, I don't know, this facility just, this seems to be a compliance free zone. I'm just going to tell you. It is, you know, unless the state of New York is willing to put a multi-metal continuous emissions monitor on Norlite, I would say that facility should be shut down. Because it's very clear from the permit that was written that they should not have taken the A triple F. And that the breadth and depth of the compliance problems, I mean, you're looking at millions of hours of noncompliance and a couple hundred thousand dollars in permits. I mean, basically, what you have now, just to be really blunt, is Cohoes has become a pollution haven for a foreign company. Trade to Be is not American-owned, okay? So.
Can you say that again?
Cohoes, the city of Cohoes has now become a pollution haven, essentially. Because you're allowing hazardous waste to be sent from all over the United States to Cohoes to be burned in a facility that has violated its clean air permits for millions of hours, millions of hours.
How do you respond to the, the idea that there has been testing and it hasn't shown any contaminants in the water? How do you, how do you square those two things?
Okay, well, number one, I haven't seen the testing, so I have no idea, okay? But let me just tell you that when you test for PFAS chemicals in water, you use method 527 or 527.1. That method right now tests for about 20 of the 4,700 perforated chemicals that are currently in commerce. So when you tell me you tested the water, I don't know what you tested it for. And also, if you're testing flowing water, yes, these chemicals love water. And you've got to get it right there, right? So I'm also like, you're going to go test the soil, like, okay, for what? You're going to test the soil for what? Because we only have soil testing methods for less than 1% of the perforated compounds that we have manufactured. So again, it's kind of like Mr. Magoo looks for pollution. And this is not just a problem in the state of New York. This is a problem all over the country. For instance, DoD went out and tested over 400 military bases across the country using method 537, which tests for about 20 chemicals. And they literally would go to community well owners at the fence line and say, we didn't find anything in your water. When they actually did, and they only reported PFAS and PFOA and said it was below the 70 part kilogram EPA number. So there's just all kinds of games being played with what you find and what that means, okay? And it's great to hear the state of New York is going to go out and do some testing. But I'm going to tell you right now, I want to see what you're going to test for. Because we have seen this game played all over the country with PFAS testing. For many of the compounds, let me just give you an example. There's only 365 laboratory standards for perforated chemicals. There's 4,700 in man, that have been manufactured. So we can't even find these chemicals. We couldn't find them if we captured them in our testing protocols. And I'm going to guarantee you that those 365 lab standards, those are only for DoD certified labs. And there's only like a half a dozen of those in the country. So unless you're going to send your lab samples here to our special lab in California, which we happen to have three of those that have those subsamples, I'm not sure what we're looking for or what we're going to find, okay? That's the, hang on, Sean. Because I guarantee you, you guys did not test the water using the top assay. I think, I, if you tested the water using the top assay, I'm going to fly to New York and take you to lunch. Because I'm guarantee you, you didn't. And the top assay is the only assay we have for drinking water or for water systems. It gives you an idea what's the total fluorine load in that water, okay? So anyways, I'm really happy to sit down tomorrow when these protocols come out and see what you're actually looking for. But let me just tell you, when we looked at firefighters that we know have been exposed to these A triple F foams, we did find a signature artifact, one perforated chemical that we found in the blood of all the firefighters that we tested, hundreds of firefighters, okay? So we are, a science on perforated compounds is advancing to the point where we can see the telltale signatures, all right? But I'm just saying, you know what? This facility has violated its permits, not just for A triple F, but for all the other stuff it burns, for millions of hours. That's what's in the agreement on consent. And unless you're willing, the state of, the state of New York is willing to put on a multi-metal continuous emissions monitor on that stack and say that unless that monitor is operating, quite frankly, I would shut the facility down because they're just a serial violator.
Jane, we're running.
Serial violator.
We're running the end of our program here. Thank you. I do want to give Sean a chance to say, you don't have to, but I'd like to give you a chance to respond. I know I've kept you on the hot seat almost the whole time. But if you want to say a few more things.
I'll just, yeah, a couple of points. I mean, first off, you know, in New York State, we don't play games with people's health and environmental contamination. And we obviously, you know, act responsibly and use the best available science and methodology that we can bring to bear to make sure that we're analyzing for the most fullest suite of compounds as we can. And we've really driven the creation of a lot of the analytical methods that are now able to test for these compounds and as broad of suite of, of these compounds as possible. Because, you know, we needed this science to be able to responsibly engage on the ground and protect New Yorkers. And, you know, that's why we embarked on the Drinking Water Quality Council. And DOH is, you know, in the process of establishing MCLs for these contaminants. And that's really based on our ability to actually sample and test for these compounds in the environment. And, you know, overall, it's, for goodness sakes, we haven't really talked about this. But, you know, we've moved forward here in the state in the absence of federal leadership. And when you look at the federal level and the fact that, you know, none of these contaminants that we're talking about tonight are regulated in any way, you know, at least New York State here has taken steps to regulate them as hazardous substances. We're always continuing to look at other actions that we can take to further enhance our regulatory ability. Because, again, that is our goal here. It's to work to drive the science, drive our testing and analytical methods so that we can engage on the ground wherever we have to. And Jane, we'd be happy to, you know, walk you through the public water supply testing that we done, that we did and, you know, show you the results of that. They will be provided in the community's water supply report that comes out as well. And moving forward, as part of the new analysis that we're doing, again, when it comes to sampling these soils, we're driving the creation of analytical methods. You know, on the federal level, we're driving EPA, ORD to be able to sample for these compounds in air emissions because we need to be able to have the testing methods and analytical capacity to analyze for these things. And we've been driving that creation and getting that science so that we can work on the ground. But irrespective of being able to sample for them in the actual emissions, we've designed air deposition studies that we're doing in Who's Falls on the ground right now to really start better understanding what the contributions are of air emissions to the contamination and contaminants that we're finding on the ground. So we're taking what we've learned from those examples there and bringing that to Cohoes. And that's why we've designed the study as we've done. Obviously, like I said, we've got a few steps in the process before we actually collect the samples with access agreements. But I did just check the notes, and there will be a top assay for the, the sampling that we'll be doing on the water that we're collecting as well, in addition to the 537.1 analytical method as well. And again, we're continuing to drive the creation of new analytical methods because, again, as a responsible regulator, we need to make sure we have science on our side as we pursue responsible parties and as we oversee facilities like this. And we're continuing to drive that testing capacity overall.
Sean, thank you so much.
And here in California, we support that. We've got to get more lab standards. We've got to get better test methods. We've got to get top assays, both for stack gases, which people are working on, and for soil sampling, or we're not protecting the public. We're just playing a shell game with the chemicals.
Jane, I want to thank you for, you know, traveling to New York, such as it were, and speaking with us this evening. Joe, thank you for sharing your thoughts on this important topic. And Sean, for answering all of these very tough questions. There are so many more that we didn't get to tonight. I'm sure we'll find some way to get them to the state or get them to you, Jane, and see if we can get them answered. I think Alexis Goldstein is going to close us out here by talking about how people can learn more involved. Alexis, do you want to close us out?
Yeah, thank you, Corinne. And I just want to echo also much gratitude for our speakers today and, and everybody that joined and asked questions. This was a very interesting and thought-provoking town hall. So if you want to learn more about Norlite and about the organizing work that's happening, you can go to the Hudson Mohawk Environmental Action Network's website. It's hmean.org, H-M-E-A-N dot org. We have bi-weekly organizing meetings with Lights Out Norlite. And you can email me, goldsmith@mediasanctuary.org to be put on our email list. You can also contact joerritchi@jrritchi@syr.edu. And to learn more about the Albany County Clean Air Law and the McDonald-Breslin bill, there's an action alert for each of those that explains the history of those bills and what you can do to get involved or to learn more about them. And we'll include those in the follow-up email to this, to this town hall, which everybody who registered will get a follow-up email. And I'll include all the information as well that I just said. So thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. And thanks for, everyone for tuning in tonight. Have a good night.